Good morning. Welcome to the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners meeting of April 5th, 2022. So I'll stand for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the agenda review.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Move to approve the agenda review.
And moved by Vance, the second, second by Kevin, is it? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the redistricting public hearing, and Mr. Michael Stalberger, property environmental resources director, is here to present the action item. This is a public hearing, public comment will be allowed in just a moment, and at this time, I'll ask Mr. Stalberg to please introduce the item before the board.
All right, good morning, everyone.
Morning, Michael.
I am fighting a cold, so I'm gonna give a little bit of extra distance for us today, if that's all right with everybody. So, Mr. Chair, you're correct, we are working through the redistricting public hearing this morning. There's a memo and several attachments in the packet, so as you're well aware, this is the redistricting process as a result of the 2020 census. We are at the public hearing portion of that, which will allow any public testimony before you would choose which redistricting plan the county would wish to implement for the next 10-year period. We do still have the two plans brought forward, and we'll go through those in a little bit more detail in a bit. We have several action items that we'll complete today. The first one, I believe that we will be covering, is the redistricting requirements and principles.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
I'll move up.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
So, in those principles and the requirements, these are criteria that you'll be using as you work forward with the redistricting plans. This is a best practice item from the Secretary of State's office. The first several bullet items are actual requirements of any redistricting plan. These would be statutory requirements that any plan must meet. For Blue Earth County, we need five consecutively numbered districts, you'll see we comply with that. We are required, as I've mentioned numerous times, to follow all precinct lines, which would normally be township, municipality, or city ward lines, so we'll be following that as we work through our work. We also have a population balance of 10%, whenever practicable. We can go above that if necessary, if it would result in a precinct being split, so we've avoided that in all instances with our plans as well. Additional requirements of the majority of the least populous districts can contain no less than a majority of the population, just to make sure that we are retaining some equal representation principles. We also have to keep all of our districts contiguous, meaning that they need to be touching, and we need to be able to drive through the entire district without leaving the district. We also look for regular and compact form, as much as practicable, based on the geography available. The public will have the opportunity to speak today if anybody would happen to attend the public hearing. Some of the principles then, these are what we would call the nice-to-haves in a plan. The principles are gonna help us guide as you make your decision, evaluating Plan A and Plan B today, or any other alternative you might bring forward. And the principles talk about being done in as politically neutral a fashion as possible, without regards to incumbency or potential candidates for any offices. We want to also make sure that we're respecting commonly identified features such as neighborhoods, cities, communities, any other natural features, as much as possible, when we're including them in districts. We also make sure that the plan results in districts that are easily identifiable and understood by the public, meaning we don't want to have a district that looks so unusual in shape or so uncommon to the community that they can't understand who's representing whom in that district. We also look at representational and population balance when we're considering any of our redistricting plans, and we also have a balancing act that we would play between the county in its entirety and the city of Mankato. The last couple of items are related to communities of interest, and respecting those whenever practicable, and also making sure that any plan we bring forward considers the ease of administration and the cost of the election processes on the districts. And so we're doing that in both of our plans by reducing the number of precincts in the city of Mankato, which is great. So those will be the principles and requirements that you'll want to consider as we work forward, and evaluate the couple of different plans that we have available to us. So I will spend just a couple of minutes going through a couple of the other attachments, before you can call for public comment, in case anybody would wish to do that. The next series of documents is related to, just to recap of what redistricting looks like, it's in PowerPoint and slides. The commissioners are quite familiar with that, so I don't believe I need to go into detail with that, unless you would like me to address anything in particular. But remember, we're always looking at balancing population, that's one of our key criteria. You've also been made quite aware that even though the counties have to do most of the work for redistricting, you're stuck doing your redistricting last, so you've got to deal with all of the geographies that have already been created, which doesn't give a ton of options to the county, but we do our best with that. Other responsibilities have already been done on behalf of the county board with publishing notice, and coordinating an open house and whatnot. So, again, I'll pause there unless you folks would like me to go into any deeper level with those slides.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. At this time, we will open up for public comment. This hearing is being recorded, so please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Is anybody here? Again, is there anyone wishing to comment? Last time, anyone wishing to comment? If not, we'll close the public comment portion and bring it back to the board. All right. And what are the wishes of the board? Discussion?
So, Mr. Chair, maybe if you'd like, I can walk through the differences between Plan A and Plan B, and that'll give you the opportunity to ask any questions regarding them. So, another document in your packet talks about the summary of staff observations between the two plans. And so as we presented at our open house and through some other workshops with the board, we've moved forward two plans that are similar in the city of Mankato, but actually they're not very similar in the city of Mankato, they moved the districts quite a bit, actually, so I should correct that, but they do also change the rural parts of the county quite substantially, and so those plans are both available to you. First off, I'll point out that both of those plans do comply with all state statutes and other requirements. They do align nicely with the redistricting principles and requirements that we just discussed, so both plans pass on the surface in those areas. They also both do a very nice job at utilizing major and apparent boundaries and topographical features, so we're quite pleased with the way that the maps look, just from an ease of administration and the ease of understanding for voters. So we've got good plans in both of those regards. The differences between the two that I'll bring to your attention, when we talk about Plan A, Plan A distributes the population amongst, for county residents, amongst five districts within 3.3% plus or minus, so that's very, very solid in terms of ideal population dispersion for our plans. It does, Plan A also creates one exclusively non-Mankato district, which is probably the most defining feature of that plan. And then the remaining districts are either in the city of Mankato with the addition of another non-Mankato district, that's about three quarters a non-Mankato. One other observation of that plan is Commissioner District Four is quite expansive geographically, that's that lime green color that runs pretty much up that western side of the city of Mankato, all the way from the southern border of the city up through the northern fringe of the city. So it's quite expansive geographically. And then similarly, Commissioner District Three is quite expansive in regard to the way that it's laid out in the city of Mankato. And actually, I'm sorry, I had those two backwards. District Four would be the rural district on that western side of the county, the purple. District Three was that green one that I was describing earlier. So, all in all, the plan works well, it does have some pretty wide geographies for a couple of our commissioners' districts, and really the feature there that's probably of most note is the fact that it has that very large rural commissioner district, not purple there, District Four. Any questions on Plan A?
Questions on Plan A? All right.
Plan B, on the other hand, also distributes the population within the 10% margin that we're allowed to deviate from ideal or average distribution. We're at 9.2% plus or minus on the, on the high end for our districts there, so that is getting a little higher, but again, it's within the margins that we need to operate within, and because of some of the restrictions we have with following existing geographies and precincts, we're still well in compliance there. This plan, Plan B, creates one exclusively non-Mankato district, plus another non-Mankato district with 72% of non-Mankato residents, so we have a slightly better, but not much noticeably better, distribution of population. That's really gonna come down to the fact that so much of the population lives in Mankato, so we just have that split, and that's gonna be a feature of our redistricting plans going forward. The three other districts are gonna be almost exclusively Mankato representation, as is indicated in the plans. Commissioner Districts Four and Five substantially split the townships and small cities of Blue Earth County, which is probably its most noticeable feature, does allow that distribution of representation a little bit more equally amongst two commissioners. And then also of note is Commissioner Districts One and Two are now picking up a little bit of the growing edge of Mankato, in terms of Mankato township, and you'll see how that grows to the east of the city there with Districts One and Two. So that's a new feature of the plan, we haven't done anything like that in the past. That's helpful from an administrative perspective, it allows us to keep the same voters with the same commissioner, even as that part of the community gets annexed into the city of Mankato. So that's Plan B. Any questions on Plan B?
Any questions on Plan B?
Chair?
Kevin?
Under draft B, on the second bullet point, one exclusively non-Mankato district, that means non-Mankato city limits, correct?
Correct.
So we have got no non-Mankato, but that does include Mankato township?
Correct, yep, and so that would be District Five would have no city of Mankato residents.
Okay. Any other questions?
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's a change, Mankato, or Commissioner District Five would be no longer in the city limits.
Any other comments?
Good point. Thank you, Kevin, for that question.
All right. Here you go. This point, is this where we're supposed to have the public comment? We already did it, so.
Chair? Chair?
Vance?
I would move to approve County Redistricting Draft Plan B.
Plan B. Vance moves the Plan B of the reapportionment plans.
I'll second that.
Second by Kip. Any discussions for anybody on the board?
We haven't had a lot of questions today, Mr. Chair. We haven't had a lot of questions today, because we've had this at a board work session more than once. We've seen all these maps at the open house. I appreciate all the effort and time and energy that the staff has put into this, and I know there was some concern about that rural area getting so large, and me being one of the rural representatives, I can attest to that, that that would be a lot of work for one single commissioner, whether the rural commissioner or a city commissioner. That's just a lot of territory to cover, and there's a lot of issues that happen out in the rural area. So I do appreciate the fact that we're able to come back to this one, where it's more split with the rural area. I think that's just gonna be more manageable for the commissioners in those districts, and I appreciate taking extra time to figure that out. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, I'll also just make a note for the record that we did have the open house, where we had limited attendance, then we've also had all of the information available in the courthouse since the open house was conducted, with also very limited feedback, but it's been available in person or on our website for about a month now.
Yeah. Chair? Vance?
I will concur with Commissioner Brundur. We're blessed in the city of Mankato to have a lot of elected officials. We have the City of Mankato City Council, we have our representatives and our congressman, our senator that takes care of the area, but it's not fair for the rural area to be, to have so many, so much area with just one commissioner. And I think it's great to divide that, the rural area, out between District Four and District Five. I think that's a, just a needed thing, because as we well know, folks of us, all of us have been here for a while, is the concerns come from the rural areas. The ditches, the roads, the, you know, the water issues, you know? And those are where the phone calls come in. I don't get those phone calls, because my area, up until this time, never had a rural, because everything was taken care of, in that sense, by the city of Mankato. So, this is why I really think Plan B is the proper one. How it's divided, how it's worked out in the city of Mankato, it wouldn't make a difference to me, but I'm more concerned about our rural constituents and that the commissioner taking care of them won't get overloaded with calls.
All right. Kevin?
I certainly concur with all that, and will support Plan B, but I too want to thank staff. We did have, as been mentioned, limited in-person, but part of that, I think, is because you put together a really great website that answered a lot of questions, and a lot of information out there, I know the interactive map. I've heard from constituents who appreciate, not just from a county commissioner, but from other redistricting things, appreciate being able to find your house on there and be able to know with all the election dates and everything else. So, thank you for the work you and the team have put in on that redistricting pages, that was appreciated by the citizens.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I'll take that back to the team, they've worked hard on that to get that, get that established for everyone to use, so.
Mr. Chair, maybe just as a point of clarification, we do have draft resolutions included in your packet, and I assume that the motion includes passage of the Plan B resolution, which also references the terms for each of the districts, and so I just want to call that out, that there are three districts that would have four-year terms, and...
Is that two separate resolutions, or do they go into the...
I think we just need the one resolution.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, it's all in one, so if you go to the top of that third page of resolution for Plan B there, you'll see that it's listed.
Page 27.
Yep, that Commissioner Districts One, Four, and Five will have a four-year term commencing January 2023, and Commissioner Districts Two and Three will have a two-year term, so we can have that staggered appropriately.
That would be my...
Yes.
That would be in my...
It's all in the, yep, your motion.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. I, yep, go ahead, well...
I was just gonna ask, Michael, is this the first time you've done this, right?
Correct, yes.
I can't remember, so, thank you, you did a great job.
I want to commend you and the staff, because it has been, I think there's been a good outreach, maybe, you know, as many people as we thought might come, but yeah, it was very thorough, all the way and through with every aspect of it, so appreciate that and thank you, and the staff. With that, if there's hearing, no other, just questions, discussion, you have it in front of you, all those in favor of, in favor of the Plan B for reapportionment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carries. All right. Thank you, Michael.
Our next step then will be to implement that in our voter systems, and that'll require us to send a postcard to every household in Blue Earth County or every voter, depending on which way we implement that, so that they'll know of their new locations. Really important to make sure that you're aware of it and everyone else is aware of it, this will be for the August elections and November elections. Our special election here in May will be using our former locations and whatnot for voting, so be a little confusing for folks, but we will get them informed as best we can.
Thank you, and yeah, you have, you have our sympathies with all of you, there's a lot to do here and happening, so.
Very good.
Appreciate it all.
Thank you very much, Michael.
All right. Then we have in front of us, the, Ryan wants to come up, and...
Morning, Ryan.
Morning, Ryan.
I've just got two repair reports, they're both for the same drainage system. I'm handling them separately as pay items, so I came up with two separate reports. Both are CD-57, this is located down in Mapleton Township. The first is just a change of cost, there was a slight increase, as we all know things are increasing. So the first one, which is Repair 22005, I have an improved cost of $54,598.75. And the second one is for some benching, which will help with future maintenance, that ditch is getting too deep, that we can't reach it with a 60-foot machine anymore. So I have a cost estimate of 60 to 80, and the reasoning for such a $20,000 swing is we don't know how extensive or precise location of benching as of yet, so it's gonna be a field-fit situation. Those are my two items.
You want one motion, Ryan?
Yeah.
That's fine.
One motion, a word?
You guys are fine with that? Yep.
Okay.
I would move the two repairs.
Kip moves the two repairs, or second? Second by Kevin. Any discussion for the board? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carries.
Thanks, Kip.
Oh, that was great. Thanks, Ryan. All right. Next, we have Public Works, and Mr. Ryan Hilders, the other Ryan.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Ryan.
Morning, Ryan.
Good day.
Good.
Nice tie.
Thank you, I thought he'd have a documentary one on.
I was informed that Easter's coming up, so I had to throw on...
It was good you were made aware of it.
I had to throw my Easter tie on, otherwise I did have my, my purple and gold one on, and I was overruled.
We were both lobbying, or meeting with legislators last Thursday, and we both had on purple and gold ties, so it looked like we coordinated.
Actually, we never even planned it, it just happened, and it was pretty good.
All right, well, we have a handful of action items, as bids are starting to roll in and things are starting to really get moving out there. So the first action item that I have for your consideration is a resolution for the authority to purchase and sell Casada 26 right-of-way. This is for the piece of Casada 26 from County-Stated Highway 12 to the city of Madison Lake that was reconstructed almost a decade ago. As part of that project, it was brought to my attention when I became county engineer that there was a three-way land agreement between the city of Mankato, Blue Earth County, and Mr. Hilders, where the county was actually gonna purchase a parcel of land from the city that was no longer necessary for the airport runout, runway runout, and then we would in turn sell the remnant piece to Mr. Hilders for development that we didn't need, and he would in turn sell a piece of land off of runway 433, which is the southwest, northeast runway, to the city of Mankato. So it was a three-way triangular deal that was negotiated, it was appraised. It lost steam for some reason, and it was brought to my attention, and Jack's been working on picking that deal back up. So, within the board packet, we do have the full resolution authorizing the county engineer to make those acquisitions and sales of that land. Again, that was a negotiated right-of-way acquisition, so we don't have to go through the typical process for advertising and things of that nature, because of the fact it was, it was a negotiated agreement. Where effectively, you can see, we purchase an entire lot that's highlighted, and we purchased that from the city of Mankato, and then we then in turn sell the remnant of it without the triangle for the new road right-of-way. So, that's the county's portion, the city's gonna be working through their end of it as well, but I would request approval of this resolution.
It's been moved, Kip, on the resolution? Second by Vance? Any more further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
That project was a longcoming project, and there was a lot of negotiating and trying to get that project moved, and so I could understand how this might have just gotten enough to get the road done, and then the rest of it just kind of gets put aside and never gets dealt with, so I appreciate Jack, or whoever found it, finding it and dealing with it and getting it done.
Absolutely.
Yep. It's good. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carries.
All right. Action item number two is consideration of the final contract payment for stated project 007682009, Mrs. County-Stated Highway 82, Victory Drive, from County-Stated Highway 60, which is Stadium Road, to just south of Hoffman Road. So the original contract amount was $3,223,979.71. The final contract payment amount is $3,249,253.59 to Dirt Merchant Incorporated. I would recommend approval of the final contract payment.
So moved by Kevin.
Second.
Dirt Merchant, and Vance, second. Discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carries.
All right, thank you. Action item number three is consideration of the local bro, local bridge replacement program grant agreement for County-Stated Highway number 40. So, within this agreement, the county will receive $177,240.35 of local bridge replacement program funds, and will have a local match for half of the bridge and the road approach work of $335,187.65. I would recommend this agreement be approved.
All right. Then moved by Kip. You have a second?
Second.
Second by Vance. Discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carries.
Thank you.
Okay.
Action item number four is consideration of bids for one new motor grader. With this, no plow wing, walk-and-roll Packer, and we also included the optional six-wheel The bids came in from RDO Equipment for a John Deere 770G, and from Ziegler Caterpillar for a Caterpillar 150. As you can see, as we've seen in the past, the John Deere was considerably lower price, $239,000 compared to $301,000. The walk-and-roll Packer was a budgeted item, so we already have that in addition to the $215,000 that was budgeted for the motor grader, so we have the Packer price included. We believe the Ziegler bid did not fully include all of the mounting hardware and attachments necessary, was just strictly the Packer, so we don't think it was complete. Regardless, the price, we would recommend approval of the John Deere motor grader, with consideration of the six-wheel drive add option, as we've discussed in the past, the board has been somewhat supportive of the idea of transforming our fleet of motor graders to being all six-wheel drive. We recently approved, I believe last year's motor grader was approved to add the six-wheel drive option, and the staff would certainly, it's a very nice thing to have, it helps, especially when you're on hills with the assist, or if you're doing any type of grading work, to have the six-wheel drive option. But I wanted to present it, knowing equipment prices were gonna be up from what we've seen in the past, I wanted to present it as an add option for the board's consideration, just knowing we've seen a lot of bids coming in higher than anticipated this last year, given all the conditions we're experiencing.
All right.
Move to approve.
Been moved, is there a second?
With the full, with the four-wheel drive assist?
With, yeah.
Six-wheel drive assist?
Six-wheel drive.
Yep. Okay, there's a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, it's moved in second, discussion, all right, all those in favor?
No, go ahead.
Yep, all those in favor say aye.
I think it's worth having it, so, thank you.
Yeah.
Aye.
Let's try that again.
We got it. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Well, thank you for that, we appreciate that, and look forward to transition. Is this how you'd like to continue to see it in the future?
Yep.
With the add option? Okay.
I think that's, and it's really a great idea, I mean, with our hills and valleys that we have across the county.
Yep.
Yep.
We need.
So just show a six-wheel drive.
You can, if you can get.
I'll support the six-wheel drives because I just think it's worth it. Better resale value, better equipment. Unless it gets to be totally out of hand.
I'm always impressed that, I always thought the color green was more expensive, but lately, the bids are coming in that yellow's more expensive than green is.
Yeah.
I don't want to get into the feud with that. You just don't want to.
We saved a lot of money by using the COVID, some of the COVID relief fund for the deferred equipment last year compared to this year. I mean, I think we priced it out. Those two pieces of equipment for the loader and the dozer would have been at least $100,000 more. So it was good that the board was supportive of replacing that equipment using those funds last year.
All right.
All right. Action item number five is consideration of bids for the annual maintenance gravel hauling contract. We received two bids, Max Johnson Trucking and R&amp;E Enterprises. This is probably the tightest I've ever seen any bid come in. Max Johnson was $250,500. R&amp;E Enterprises was $250,600. So I would recommend approval of the Max Johnson Trucking bid.
So moved.
It's been moved by Kip, second by Kevin. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Can't get too much closer than that, can you?
Not much. Action item number six is consideration of bids for the annual CRS-2 bituminous emulsion contract. We opened the proposals, and Flint Hills was the apparent low bidder at $552,800, followed by HG Mikes of $605,575, and then Jebro at $755,744. Upon evaluation of the proposal submitted by Flint Hills, there were several modifications made by Flint Hills in their submittal to the county's bid documents, to the proposal documents, that effectively what they were trying to do was change it from listing them as a contractor to listing them as a supplier, which is something I guess I'll be speaking with Mr. McDermott's staff on. Those modifications, really what it, what it created was an irregular bid proposal, and the county has the ability to consider several different options with an irregular bid proposal. We could, we could accept it if we think that it's substantially equivalent to the other bids that were submitted, or it wasn't a substantive change. We could reject that bid, accept the second highest bid, or we could reject bids and rebid the project. So unfortunately, I was not able to get in touch with their representative until late yesterday. He was off the grid, as he told me, whatever that means. So we're trying to work through this with their legal and reviewing that. They also made some slight modifications to our insurance requirements page. If they can still provide the same substantive insurance coverage, that's really all we need. So we're trying to work through this and make sure that we're being as fair as possible to the other bidders, in addition to making sure that they've got a reasonable bid. So I would request at this point in time that the board just table this for two weeks, and I would bring it back until 19th.
All right. What's that?
Bring it back on the table, running on the table, so.
Yeah, I think you can just leave it be and bring it back for action at a future date.
Yep. Now, there is no bids, no motions, so we can just.
We'll do that.
Pull it.
Okay. So I'll plan on bringing that back with the, say, Mapleton Board, it's on the 19th.
All right.
Last action item is consideration of the annual maintenance striping contract. We received two bids, Sir Lines A Lot, which was previously AAA, so they bought out AAA, and Traffic Markings, so that's why we see a reduction from three to two bidders. Sir Lines A Lot previously, AKA Striping, $248,320, and Traffic Markings, $268,975. So I would recommend award of this contract to Sir Lines A Lot.
I would move to approve Sir Lines A Lot.
It's been moved in second. I just like the name now. So, all right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
All right. Just some informational items then. Project updates, the County Road 169 Bridge, just west of Pemberton, will be closed tomorrow to begin replacement, so it shouldn't be a major traffic impact. That is fairly low-traffic volume road. County State Highway 1, the road will be closed next Wednesday, April 13th, to resume construction. Will likely have to close Red Jacket Valley Park until late May, so that the contractor can get the reconstruction work done. The timing of that is obviously better than having it closed in the middle of summer when it's hot out, people want to use the swimming beach area, the park road, it's different amenities. So folks could still theoretically get in there if they rode the Red Jacket Trail in and went down into Red Jacket Park and went under the bridge. There's, there's still access there, but it'll be limited. The parking lot will be closed off, and the road will be under construction. Do some signing and public outreach to let folks know that. County Road 151 Bridge Replacement Project is advertised open bids on March 20th for May 3rd board consideration. County State Highway 7 in Mapleton, the bids are, I'm sorry, the contracts are awarded and have been signed. We're having the pre-construction meeting late this, I'm sorry, this Friday, and we're anticipating construction will begin relatively shortly thereafter. WW Blacktop has expressed that they're ready to begin working on it as soon as conditions are fit. 10 and 72 in Vernon Center, the city consultant engineer, SEH, is still waiting for USDA approval of their bid documents. That's taken considerably longer than they anticipated. Once that's completed, they'll wrap up all the different approvals that are necessary and try to get it out to bid as quickly as possible. Right now, it's looking like Cassa 10 would be reconstructed this year, and 72 may be delayed until next year. I told them it really doesn't matter necessarily to the county what sequence, as long as 10 is constructed this year, when 72 is done is whatever's best for the city. Something for access to the businesses and the lumberyard is better to wait until next year. That was the logic behind it.
So we're, Mr. Chair, we're okay with a kind of a two-step approach then from our perspective?
The reason 10 needs to be done this year, if it's, or it'd have to wait perhaps another subsequent year, is because we also have Cassa 13 planned for next year, and I'd hate to have both of those under construction at the same time, given their proximity and both being east-west roads.
That's too fresh in our mind, posing two major roads. Oh, or two different roads at least.
Cassa 11 from 20 to 68 is advertised open bids on April 27th. We'll bring that to the May 3rd board meeting, as will we bring the bids for Cassa 12 from 26 to 2. So they're both on a parallel track. Cassa 16 from La Sura River, design is progressing, and we're anticipating a late summer bidding, again, for most of the work to probably happen next year. Cassa 13 from 169 to 1, SEH, I'm sorry, SRF, has begun preliminary design, including bridge layout and span. So we were looking at different options for the length of the bridge, where the piers were located. We're seeing some degradation at the bridge and the channel's actually shifting to the east, so we're trying to accommodate that a little bit and make sure that we're putting it in a good fit, so that we're not battling future erosion problems. We've also met with several of the high-impact landowners for feedback on design alternatives, especially in areas where we have curb realignment for site distance improvement for safety purposes. And we've had some really good feedback, good meetings with those folks. So it's always nice to kind of get their buy-in before you go to a public open house meeting and maybe lambasted for having to cut into a field. They understood the need, and we're good to work with, so we appreciate that. 26 from 57 to 22, the preliminary design is also underway, and we're working on the Bray Park Beach Bathhouse renovation. All the interior demolition has been done. The floors have been torn out. One of the walls has been torn off, so we're waiting on the Mason to come in mid-April with the special block that was ordered. The plumbing and electrical designs are into the state inspectors for their approvals. We would anticipate that work will follow. We are running into, just like everything else, material and contractor unavailability, so I can't give a certainty as to the date that the project will begin, or I'm sorry, be completed. We are anticipating midsummer likely, and we'll have additional portable sanitary facilities, satellite toilets, next to the beach area, so that people aren't, you know, short of those restroom facilities. But it'll be a nice project, and again, a good cost savings of the county compared to rebuilding that when the structure was in pretty solid structural condition, so. The other item I've included is I passed around new county maps. So those include our Cassa 12 extension, as well as some of our other roadway alignments. Got the new county engineer's name on them. They've got all sorts of updates. So there's a copy there for each of you. If you'd like more, just let our office know and we'll send you some. We also have it posted online, so it's up there for the public consumption. And then I also passed around the updated Highway User Tax Distribution Fund breakdown for 2022. This is really a nice synopsis of how all of those different fund sources, including the fuel tax revenues, license fees, motor vehicle sales tax, and auto parts sales tax, get subdivided to the 5% distribution, to the 95% distribution, which then is subdivided between, again, Mendot getting 63%, I believe. The county's getting 29, and the local city's getting a smaller share. You step a percent, there is 29 and 9, you have 62, 29, 9. And so then, once that, that total amount of the Cassa distribution, which is about 703 million, comes in, it goes in, again, to that need system where it's broken down and subdivided amongst the 87 different counties based on our, our money needs for our road and bridge infrastructure. So really interesting look, and then shows the up-to-date numbers on just how, how complex that funding breakdown is.
Mr. Chair, this is probably a key question, but is this, is this information or this pamphlet available electronically?
Yes. Yep, I believe it's on the.
And I also have a backup, and I should know the answer to this as well. But on our map, on our county map, is that also available? It's on the website. Is it available as a PDF or electronically?
Yeah, I believe, and if that's Jesse, I think they could download the PDF from the county website or not.
I believe we put that out there last, the company's.
It's a good question, yeah.
I can send you the link.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
That concludes my report. If there's any other questions.
On your, on your annual safety meeting, what's the times of that?
The annual safety meeting is an all-day for our staff, so thank you for the reminder on that. That'll be Friday, April 22nd, I believe. And Commissioners and administration are invited to lunch, usually served right about noon, but.
Okay. 22nd.
And we'll have, that's the time of the year where the retirees join us as well, as several retirees from the department join us also.
It's a good time.
That's, I, I saw the invitation, and I thought, well, there's no times on here, and that's up at the Public Works.
Up at the Public Works Department, yep.
All right.
What's for lunch, though?
Anything else?
The important questions.
That's right. Get that in.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you much. All right. Looks like we have the county attorney.
Morning, Pat.
Good morning, Pat.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, the numbers speak for themselves. Just a couple of brief updates. I think since we last met, we have had one additional homicide case filed in the office, so I think we're up to eight open homicide cases at this juncture. And then we're looking at, I had a conversation with an individual recently, and we're looking at doing a study and comparison and evaluation of our trobacy program. It's over, you know, sixth, sixth year. There's been quite a many positive things about that program that have come to light from the school districts and whatnot, so I think it's time that we should sit down and evaluate that, so we're probably going to have somebody from the outside do that. But just in general, if you have any questions, concerns, or comments, please let me know. Otherwise, I'll sit down and you can continue on with your meeting.
Do you have any questions?
What's, I mean, when you, when you look at your, your graphs, you're noticing that misdemeanors have gone down just drastically. What's, I mean, I, I just don't have that feeling that our misdemeanors have gone down drastically. Is it a different way of looking at it, or?
Well, in, in some respects, they have gone down drastically. They're starting to pick back up in some areas. During COVID, law enforcement was not making contacts with individuals. They were not out there. You know, right now, there's the distracted driving campaign going on. During COVID, there were no types of campaigns like that going on. So it's a lot of the misdemeanor traffic has gone down, but with things opening back up and less concerns of COVID, that's why from 2020 to 2021, we've seen an increase of over 50% in driving well-impaired cases that have been filed with the courts. So, but I think that we're probably at the, at the bottom and are starting to trend back up with respect to some of these numbers. So, but that's, that's my, it's not a scientific theory, but that's my theory.
It's interesting to look at that because I, you know, I know you get, keep in contact with towards zero deaths and stuff like that, too. And it's noted that in '21, the death rate had gone up 26%.
Yes. And a lot of that is attributed to, to speed.
Speed.
And distracted driving is, is more dangerous these days than, than driving well-impaired. And, you know, it's times like this, I think of my, my high school math teacher, Mrs. Virgin, and it's like, why do I need to know this stuff? Well, if you know that a car traveling at 55 miles per hour, if you look down for a little over three seconds, less than four seconds, you've traveled the length of a football field. And with the reaction time, especially somewhat of my generation, and the reaction time and the amount of time that it takes to stop, it could require you to that full thousand or 100 yards to be able to stop a vehicle.
Absolutely.
So that's why the distracted driving has been so important, so much more deadly these days.
Right. And it's almost, you know, you can see where the, the less violations, and then all of a sudden, the higher death rate. If, if our officers are out there and start getting the violations again, maybe it'll turn itself around, along with education and along with other things that, that need to be involved. I mean, amazing that speed over 100 miles an hour went up like 100%.
Yes.
You know, which is just amazing to me.
I think through the Department of Public Safety and the Office of Justice Programs, we'll see that the campaigns coming back from Memorial Day weekend, for the Fourth of July weekend, Labor Day weekend, even though it's, because it's usually one of the longer weekends, is probably one of the most deadliest on the roads. But I think we'll see more of those campaigns and more enforcement.
Thank you so much for your work.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you, Pat. All right. It's time to move. I guess we could proceed, but.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the county board minutes for March 22nd.
So moved.
Second.
Second. No questions? All those in favor of the county board minutes approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Next are the two, the bills for the two weeks indicated.
All right.
I'll move the bills.
I'm moved by Kip for the bills.
Second.
They're second by Vance. Any questions? Do you want to stump the administrator here? Okay. In that case, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Okay, we have this update on human resources.
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number eight in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. We have one action item for the board, and that is authorization to initiate recruitment for a probation officer, too. You may recall when I brought forward the mediated settlement agreement with the probation officers group, that as part of that discussion, there was a request from the union that we count some additional positions in the Community Corrections Department in terms of the ratio of the number of PO2s that we would employ. In the contract, the language does indicate that we would have at least 50% of the employees in that PO2 category. We had an assistant probation officer and a temporary position that the union requested be included in that formula count. And so we did agree to that at the table, and so are bringing this authorization forward to comply with that mediated settlement agreement.
I would move.
Moved by Kevin.
Second.
And second by Kip. Item. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
And just as a point of clarification, this will be a promotional opportunity, so it's not an additional FTE, but it'll just be a promotional opportunity for existing staff. Under informational items, then, we have a number of positions that have been filled, including a deputy sheriff, a part-time correctional officer in the jail, and then a licensed enter specialist. a license enter specialist. We also had a number of promotions, one being an assistant probation officer to a probation officer, one, a clerical specialist to a financial assistance case aide in our Human Services Department, and a property environmental resources specialist, one, to a specialist, two position. As a result of the clerical specialist position in Human Services, we have initiated recruitment to refill that position. And then on the property environmental resources specialist, we have also initiated recruitment to refill that position. We also had a correctional officer position that we've initiated recruitment as a result of someone who had initially accepted an offer, ultimately chose not to join the organization. So we're back to recruiting to refill that position. And then we also had a resignation of a correctional officer in the jail, so we've initiated recruitment to fill that position. We had a resignation of a 911 dispatcher, and subsequently have initiated recruitment to refill that position. We had a resignation of a facilities maintenance technician in our facilities department, so we've initiated recruitment to fill that position. A resignation of a public health case aide, and so we've initiated recruitment to fill that position. Another correctional officer has resigned, so we've initiated recruitment to fill that position. Then we had two child support officers that have kind of completed their employment and have resigned, and so we've initiated recruitment to fill both of those positions, as well as the resignation of a property environmental resources specialist, and we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. So continue to have a lot of activity in our human resources area. I'd be happy to answer. Any questions that the board might have?
Any questions above?
Busy time. Out of the questions.
All right. Mr. Chair and Commissioner, I have number nine in your packet. It is a request for a 3-2 liquor license by the Kato Cycle Club. The license request has been reviewed by the county attorney and county sheriff, and so we're recommending approval of that license.
Moved to approve.
And moved by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Vance. See, where's the Kato Cycle Club again? Is that on the?
It's out on 169.
South, that's what I told her.
Right on the, right on by the river.
Yep. Okay. Okay. Well, there's, you have the motion here? Those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number 10 in your packet. It is a memo regarding the law library fee. The law library did meet last year and voted to increase the law library fee from $7 to $10. Statute limits those increase to only occur effective July 1st, so we're a little bit ahead of the game here, but wanted to get that on the record here to have the county board approve it so that we could get it in place effective July 1st.
I'll move approval.
It's been moved by Kip. Second by Vance. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, carries. All right.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number 11, then, is a memo regarding the Emergency Management Performance Grant. We have been awarded a grant as part of the 2021 Emergency Management Performance Grant in the amount of $37,295. That does require a dollar-for-dollar match, and this grant agreement runs from 1/1/21 through September 30th of 2022.
Moved to approve.
And been moved by Vance. And second, second by Kevin. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Item number
I knew that was the emergency.
Sorry. Item number 12 in your packet is a memo regarding vice chair with the departure of Commissioner Langhammer from Commissioner District One. She had been appointed as the vice chair for 2022, now recommending Commissioner Stuenberg be appointed as the vice chair.
I'll move approval.
And moved by Kip, and second by Kevin, with Vance being the vice chair.
I will not be voting on this.
Okay. All, all those in favor, signify, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carries.
Thank God we got three of them that can vote, though, so.
It was a close vote.
I know, it's close. But thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I have number 13 in your packet. It is a memo regarding committee assignments. Again, with the vacancy in Commissioner District One, we had a number of committees that needed someone appointed to, and so staff are recommending that Commissioner People be appointed to the Airport Commission, Commissioner Stuenberg to the City-City County Intergovernmental Committee, Commissioner People to the Community Services Council or Community Ed and Rec, and Commissioner Pap to the Region Nine Development Commission Board.
Mr. Chair, so as, as I understand, understand this, we've got the process where we've set a hearing date and starting to, to work through that process. How does this memo deal with, if that, if that open seat is filled for any of the remaining of this year, how does that pertain to these committees? Is this until there's a person, or even if there is a person, would these committees remain the same then for 2022?
I think it could go either way, really. I think the board would need to revisit this issue a little bit to see if there are other committees that need to be traded off, so to speak. Obviously, we don't have this happen all this off, all that often, so we're kind of feeling our way through a little bit, but we certainly could leave these assignments with the commissioner listed here for the rest of the year. But it kind of depends on the interests and qualifications maybe of someone that does get appointed.
Okay, Vance?
I was, I was just going to say the same thing. We can always revisit this after, if, if we do appoint someone, we can revisit this. And obviously, this is only four committees, so each of us have well over 20 committees each. So we would expect that the new commissioner coming in would have more than four, and we would have to revisit this and, and decide what that commissioner would be doing.
Mr. Chair, so the rest of the committee assignments, are we just kind of waiting to see? I mean, these we had to fill because we're pretty active in these. The rest of them, just kind of, we'll deal with them as they come up, I guess?
Well, a number of other committees that Commissioner Langhammer had, had alternates already.
Oh, he did, okay.
And there were also a number of AMC-related committees, so
NACO's in there.
So when we went through the list, these were the ones that we felt we needed to have someone appointed to.
All right. All right.
Does that, that requires a vote?
I better figure which ones might have alternates for her, then.
Yeah, does it require?
Yes. Since we had approved a committee list at the beginning of the year, we should adjust that.
Okay. So Vance moves to adjust the committee
Second.
assignments, and Kip, second. Just more discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carries. All right.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number 14, that includes a memo regarding American Rescue Plan spending related to housing-related support services, based on feedback from the board in the past around the budget that was shared with the board when we first received some ARP funds. We worked with Minnesota Valley Action Council on an idea in terms of housing-related supports. And so Minnesota Valley Action Council has brought forward two options that were on our list related to weatherization services as well as homeless, homeless prevention services. And so we've been talking with Nancy Bolkman from the EDA at the city about what housing needs exist. We continued that conversation then with Judge Schultz from Minnesota Valley Action Council. Thought he maybe was going to be joining us today, but I think I told him it'd be, be after 10:00, so he might be joining us here in a little bit. But we, we came up with what's listed in the packet here of two services, one related to weatherization services. Minnesota Valley Action Council has identified that there's a number of homes in Blue Earth County that could benefit from their weatherization program but are not eligible because of asbestos issues in those homes. And so based on the boundaries or limitations of their existing program, there he is. Hi, good morning, Judd.
Good morning.
We're actually a little ahead of time, so we just started the items, so you're just in time.
So as long, as long as you're ready. Come on up.
I was just introducing some of the services and talking about weatherization, that this would be more to get houses ready so that you can utilize some of the existing weatherization services. And then the homeless prevention services, MVAC has administered a program for a number of years on behalf of a number of counties in the region, including Blue Earth County. And this funding here would allow us to, again, focus on Blue Earth County residents, but to address what we think is going to be some needs around rental assistance and homeless prevention types of services. So maybe, Judd, you want to just talk a little bit about both of those programs and why we think that would be helpful in our community?
I can, I can talk about the weatherization first. So this is very timely. We have actually a number of people that would be eligible for the service if we could deal with issues that they currently have with their home, the big one being vermiculite insulation. If we go into a home, do a pre-audit, see that they have vermiculite insulation, we just have to walk away from it, put them on a deferred list. They used to allow us to test for if that vermiculite still had asbestos in it or not, and we can't even do that anymore. We just have to walk away. There used to be a small amount of funds previously that would allow us to mitigate that, but those funds are gone, and there are no, new funding has, has been coming. The state keeps talking about providing more money, but it's just not there. And so we would use these funds to take those folks in Blue Earth County that have that issue, mitigate that asbestos or that vermiculite, so we could go in then and do the weatherization services. And we know when we go into a household and do weatherization, we're going to save them 30% on their energy costs. That's national numbers that have been studied multiple times. So it feels really bad when we have to walk away from these households, that this is something that we know can help them, but because of this old insulation, can't do anything. That would be our main focus. We also have other houses that, for whatever reason, we can't do weatherization, that the program just doesn't provide those funds to fix a hole in the rook or do anything like that. But I think when we, when we looked at sort of the, the need we had, we had a number of households in Blue Earth County that have this situation that are on our deferral list. And so that 200,000, we're hoping can assist about 15 to 18 households, get them to the point where we can do the weatherization services. So that's on the weatherization side, just really it's helping those folks that otherwise can't get the program because they have something that they're really not going to be able to, to deal with the expenses. I think in the last few years, as we looked at people, we helped the average cost to mitigate that's ran anywhere between 12 and $16,000. So low-income households just not going to have the wherewithal to do that on their own. So that's what we're going to do with that. Any questions on that?
15 to 18 houses. Do you have any idea how many houses are out there?
Oh, we have, we have more on our deferral list. I done, I was just looking at, I think in Blue Earth County, this actually, because when we look at our deferral list, we keep that all nine counties, because we do weatherization in all nine counties. So I think those 15 to 18 households that we could hit in Blue Earth County probably cover most of them in Blue Earth County for this particular issue.
That would be awesome.
We have a lot over the nine counties.
That would be great.
It's good news. It's nice to see the money go that far.
Yeah. And, and the thing is, it's too bad, because like I say, when we go in and weatherize, you know, we know that they're going to experience that savings. They're going to be comfortable, they're going to be safer, and they're going to experience that savings on their energy bill. So it's a big, big win-win all the way around, so we can do that.
Better insulation.
On the homeless prevention side, so we just have a lot of people coming to us these days with the whole pandemic and the misinterpretation by people of not having to pay their rent. But we still have a lot of households hurting. There are a lot of households that, for whatever reason, didn't get assisted with, we assisted, in the nine counties, we had, we had two rounds of assistance above and beyond regular programs. We have the CHAP program, which we provided $2.2 million in assistance to households in the nine counties in the space of about three months. And then we have the Rent Help program. And we just have a lot of people with the abrupt ending of the Rent Help Minnesota program. We have a lot of households that didn't get served or potentially applied and got denied and didn't appeal, or just never were able to finish their application. So we still have a lot of people out there that have bad due rent. A lot of the people coming to us that have that past due rent, it's in the, it's in the thousands of dollars. So it's $2,000, $3,000, $6,000. And so what we would be doing with this program is, is we're not going to reinvent the wheel. We currently have a homeless prevention program that works very well and assists people throughout the nine counties. So we would essentially use that model to use these funds to help people in Blue Earth County. Basically, that's either keeping them housed where they're at, so preventing they're homeless. They, they have a notice, they have an eviction schedule, they need help, we can go in, we can pay that past due rent. We then provide services going forward, so if they need maybe another couple months of help, we have, we basically case manage that, put them on a plan, try to get to the point where they don't need the assistance. The other piece of this is called rapid rehousing, so that's where they're literally homeless. And so could be living in their car, could get a shelter, could be doubled up, so using the state definition of that. And then we can get them into a new unit, we can pay that deposit and that first month's rent, and then once again, support them, get them on their feet to the point where they don't need the assistance. So that's what we would be doing with the money underneath that homeless prevention, is it's, it's not, it's, it's basically supporting something that works well, and then just targeting this to Blue Earth County. The other thing we did with those funds is when we look at homeless prevention, the program that's funded by a state, it's about 50/50 as far as the amount we get for direct assistance and the amount we get for staff time. Well, on this 500,000, I went heavier on direct assistance. I went 350,000 on the direct assistance and 150 on staff time, just because we're seeing those potentially large amounts of past due rent that people are coming to have paid. And so basically, it's, it's there, it, we have a need, we have a lot of people coming to our door now, and so this is very timely. There's still a lot of people hurting.
Are you seeing other counties doing this with ARP funds?
Nobody yet. Nobody else has stepped up.
Well, we are kind of the leader.
Yeah, well, you are. You guys are. You're definitely here. Nobody yet, but I could see that as counties have those conversations, you know, we would definitely welcome to talk to them about that. We have representative, representatives, county commissioners from all nine counties on our board at MVAC, and we routinely talk about these items and they hear about it. So I wouldn't be surprised if we get down the line that there'll be other counties or communities that step up and say, hey, we have some money, what do you need? We've already worked with the City of St. Peter and the City of Fairmont. They provided some of their funds to help pay past due water bills, and so we manage that for them. So some cities have done that. I expect to potentially see other counties ask the questions of us.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you, Judd.
It just makes sense to team up with the program that's already in place instead of us recreating the wheel and
Absolutely.
getting staff in.
Yeah.
When you say you spend 150,000 on staff time, that's, that's a lot of money, but it also takes a lot of people
Yep.
to make this program work. And it's not just as simple as handing out money.
Yep.
Your staff will be following through with these people, helping them budget and do things
Right.
to keep them productive. So
Right.
if people hear about this, it doesn't seem like, you know, your staff will all make all, all kinds of money, because it's a very time-consuming.
Yep.
And it's an ongoing process.
And it's an ongoing process.
Right, we, we have required monthly check-ins with those households, just to, we create plans for them that they need to follow through on, so we're checking up with them each month, and that's how they get to keep that assistance if they need it. So the households do have things they need to be doing, so, and you're right, that takes staff time. You know, three years ago, we had two people working in homeless prevention. We now have five, just because of the demand and the need, yeah. So you're right, it, it takes, it is staff intensive working with these households.
Well, Judd and his staff will do a great job managing this program, so thank you for taking that.
You do, thank you. That's good.
Thank you, appreciate that.
If there's other discussion with that, I would move approval.
That was just.
I would second that.
Okay, we got a motion from Kip, second from Vance to approve the funds there. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed carries.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Judd.
Kip, you're still on the MVAC board, right? You're still on the MVAC board.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judd.
Thank you, Judd, appreciate it.
That's why he knows how to ask. That's why he knows how to ask the questions.
I know it, he's amazing.
Judd does a good job.
I'm in Kip.
Yeah, he was talking about you.
Yeah.
All right. Well, we are after ten, but I know we're going to just finish. He wishes to finish. Okay, we do have the, oh, election of the vice chair. Let's see, we did that, we're done then. Yeah, all done. So all right, commissioners' reports, we'll start with, we'll start with you, Vance.
Start with me. Okay. Let me see, go back here a couple weeks. I start on the twenty-third of March, I had a NACO transportation and USDOT call-in. On the twenty-fourth, I had a towards-zero-death speed messaging meeting. We're trying to get out through the, the region as to how to get people to realize that what they're doing on the road makes a difference, and just like myself and the county attorney, we're talking earlier about the speed, the, you know, the going through stop signs, going, I mean, it's, everything has gone up. I mean, it's, so we're trying to get different ideas. That evening, the twenty-fourth, we had our annual parks advisory meeting, and on the twenty-ninth, myself and my wife read to the kids at the library. And then on the thirty-first, myself and our county engineer, Ryan Tilges, went to Transportation Day at the Capitol for the Transportation Alliance. We had some very good meetings with our, our new legislator, Mr. Olson, who's going to be taking over months in space if he gets elected this fall. And then.
Bjorn.
Bjorn. We had a forty-five to an hour talk with him. What a wonderful young man.
He's, he's, yeah.
It's interesting, when, you know, he actually understands local government, he was a mayor of a small town. I mean, he, he understands, you know, how county and city government works, and that's great. Spoke with Mr. Fredericks, we spoke with both our senators, both Senator Friends and Senator Rosen, in person, and that was great, we had great talks. That evening, we had our township officers meeting right here in third floor. On the first, I had a meeting with our IT person from TDS and to talk about some changes that are being made through our IT. I'm, I'm now chair of TDS, so they figure I, I need to know all this information. Let me see here, and yesterday, Transportation Alliance had their legislative committee that I attended on Zoom, and that's the end of mine.
Okay, thank you, Vance. Kevin?
All right, thank you. Since our March twenty-second board meeting, I attended the Green Scene Ag Day event later that afternoon. On March twenty-fifth, we had our Mousour One Watershed One Plan Policy Committee meeting. Twenty-eighth, I attended both the PACE and the Rural Minnesota Energy Board, PACE is the Property Assess Clean Energy Subcommittee on that, as well as had a NACO Policy Committee Call for the Ag and Rural Policy. It's already been talked about, the township officers that were here, well-attended, it's always good to have to set up more chairs for those in township government. Benko Annual Meeting on, on the second of April, and then yesterday, I participated in the JD eleven, JD twelve, JD forty-nine landowner meetings, attended the Lake Crystal Administrator Candidates Open House, and then, as mentioned, the Mousour River Midpoint Open House was last night. Calls and conversations have been pretty much centered around some drainage washouts as we come to spring, ditch thirty-five and some road restriction questions. That completes my report.
Thank you, Kevin. Kip?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. After our last meeting, then I had my Emergency Communication Board, everything is moving along fairly well there. We had a couple updates on some programs we're working on. We got the conference coming up this April, we'll be pretty active up there. And then I had my statewide emergency communication board the same day. That is, I got all the reports from everyone, a whole lot of new stuff going on there. Park meeting, which I don't think you mentioned, Vance, but Vance and I were at the park.
Yeah, I did.
And you mentioned the park meeting, but I was, I was at the banquet. Anyways, very nice over in good thunder.
Yeah.
And Ryan gave a little, just a quick update on the tree situation we have and what's going on at the parks. There's a lot of staff there, and there was actually good turnout. Vance said a couple things, and we got done with that night. Had our MVAC Head Start Audit, so me and a couple of the other board members were on a call with some people with the federal government, asking us how the program is run and getting, just kind of going through our financial part of the audit. The Benko meeting that Kevin mentioned already, I attended that morning or afternoon, and that was very well-attended for being not held for a couple years. And I finished up yesterday with the MRCI meeting, and we are moving along fairly well there. We just got rid of our building here on MAP Drive and continuously struggling with trying to find enough helpers, but we have programs and vans and everything, we just need some bodies to fill the vans. Seems to be our challenge, and I had our audit yesterday, and everything is looking good with the audit. That's my report, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Kip. I just had Thursday, the March twenty-fourth, I did have a partners for affordable housing, and of course, moving along and always looking to raise more money, but we're also taking care of, it seems like, more and more people. I mean, all our places are full, and we're doing, always doing some outreach. And then Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, I did go to Anna Thill, she retired from the Mankato Grow, and she's with Excel, and she's, works with Tricia at Excel. And it kind of took a lot of her stuff as she, as she moved up, Tricia moved up. And Thursday, March thirty-first, I just had a virtual, that's with the Mankato Affordable Housing Group, they meet periodically and look for ways exploring for more affordable housing in the Mankato area. It's separate from the partners, but they're involved with it. Then the township, and the township officers at the courthouse here, and that was a good meeting, and it was pretty well, quite well-attended, and I get the impression, of course, they're looking at coming, they want to meet here more on a regular basis. Do I get that, Bob? I think.
Yeah, I, I thought they, they really, they were impressed with the area, the much room, they didn't, you know, and just like Kevin said, it's, it's a good meeting when you have to pull in more chairs, and that's exactly what happened, and that, and that's a pretty, pretty fair-sized room up there, so we, I was, I know, I came like five, five two, and, and that room was packed full, so it was good.
It was good. So, and that, missed opportunity with the parks, but other than that, that concludes my report, and if we have nothing else here.
Moved to recess.
By Kevin, moved to recess.
Second.
Second by Kip. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed carries. We are recessed.
Good job, Mr. Chair.
More scenario.
More scenarios.